Okay. Good evening and welcome to the May 4, 2015 City Council meeting. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Here.
Councilmember Nation?
Here.
Councilmember Pilch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byrne?
Here.
Mayor Moss?
Here. Very good. And right off the bat, there was no closed session, so no report. And we'll go on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that will be enacted in one motion by the council, unless somebody would like to pull an item from the calendar. Would any of the councils?
Oh, I better. Can I pull the wireless ordinance? I just have a clarification. That's 4-6.
4-6.
4-7.
4-6 and 4-7?
4-8.
4-6, 4-7, and 4-8.
Oh, yes, 4-7 as well.
Okay. So, we... All right. Let's go to 4-6.
Yeah, my concern is quick. I just want a clarification. You know, we did pass 2015-03, which continues the prohibition of wireless facilities in residential districts, but there was a bit of confusion about public right-of-ways in residential district versus private buildings in residential districts, and there was going to be further clarification of that. And so when you say prohibition of wireless facilities in residential districts, does that include or not include public right-of-ways? Oh, there she is.
Good evening. It does include public right-of-way for the time being. With your direction at the last council meeting, we are going to take this back to the Planning Commission on June 10 for further clarification on those items that you asked for further refinement.
Okay, good. Thanks. That was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions on 4-6? No? Okay, how about 4-7? This is the 2015 pavement rehabilitation phase-one construction project.
Before we begin, as far as recusing myself, this is the one that includes paving in front of my... on my block, does it not? Are we...
Yeah, this does include a number of potential projects that are within the 500-foot area. However, the city in the past has determined that these types of projects are really citywide and affect the public generally in the same manner. So, the practice here has been not to recuse... councilmembers not to recuse themselves, even though there might be projects that are within the 500-foot limit because those projects are going to be scattered all over the city eventually. That's been the reasoning process, anyway.
We also wouldn't have a quorum this evening if each of you, you know, recused from the entire project, so...
Okay.
Right. I think it would be down to Michael tonight, too.
We've treated this essentially as like adopting an overall citywide plan, like a element of the general plan or something along those lines.
Okay. If it's needed for a quorum, I'll stay. Thanks.
If I get to be the dictator for the night, then just let me know what you want.
Okay. So, is there a staff report?
The item 4-7 is the 2015 pavement rehabilitation phase-one construction project. And these projects include different streets throughout the city. We are going to use different treatment methods to do maintenance for the street. And in this case, because we have a concern from the citizen, so one thing we are going to add on is to add certain striping so that we can expedite ATP project. And this is what we are planning to do. If you have any specific question, I'll be happy to answer.
Our community development director, Jeff Bond, is also going to talk specifically and show us a map of the areas we're suggesting to add some striping and signage.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. Up on the screen behind me is... I hope that brightens up a little bit in a minute. A series of street segments that were identified in the active transportation plan and then which the council approved a couple of years ago. And then last November, the council approved a design for implementation of what we call the striping and signage elements of that active transportation plan. Striping and signage being relatively low-cost, kind of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, of improvements identified in the active transportation plan. So, what's illustrated in this graphic is a series of improvements that we could incorporate into the bid package as an ad alternate to have the contractor implement those improvements that were approved by the council in November. It includes both segments that are getting... several segments that are getting the rehabilitation treatment that the Public Works Director was talking about, as well as some segments that, in our staff's view, would be relatively high priority and also are on roadways that are in relatively good shape, so that we're not spending money painting a roadway that in a few years we're going to end up redoing again. So, there... these roadways are, however, ultimately going to get rehabilitated. Talbot is probably the one street that is sooner rather than later on the prioritization of rehabilitation. And in that case, in all of these cases, we would propose using a water-based paint, which is a little less expensive, but doesn't... but doesn't last as long. And so that way, we don't put a lot of money into a thermoplastic paint, which is... lasts much longer, and then just have to grind it up a few years from now. So anyhow, this, again, is just a way to make sure that we're moving forward on the active transportation plan as we're moving forward with rehabilitation of the pavement.
Okay. We have questions up here? Council?
I have a question about curb cuts, but should I wait till we finish the signage and striping piece first?
I wasn't going to have any more presentation on this. Some of us very may need to answer the questions, but between the two of us, we'll do our best.
So, I... my question is, it said something about there's 18 that are going to be reconfigured. Does that mean that instead of being at the diagonal, right at the corner, they'll be straightened out so that the person ends up in the crosswalk? Is that the plan?
In general, yes. The reason we picked the 18 location is because those are part of the project, number one. Number two, those are locations, when we did a field survey, we believed that this is the best time to do it so that it will minimize the city liability. What we are trying to do is, we are trying to replace the existing curb ramp or the existing location that's supposed to have a real-good curb ramp with a Caltrans-approved standard, so that when we do it, we do it right, and also it lowers the city liability.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I have some questions. The... I understood the... I talked to staff a bit about this. I understood that perhaps some of the streets might get thermoplastic treatment if they were in good enough shape rather than paint, but you just stated that in all of these cases, you would use paint.
Well, we'll look at that a little bit more carefully. For the streets that have been recently rehabilitated, such as Spokane, as an example, is one of those that's shown here, that... you're correct, that should get a thermoplastic treatment because that's a roadway that hopefully we're not going to touch for decades. Talbot is at the other extreme of a roadway that clearly needs attention in the relatively near future, and so we'll be strategic about how we're spending the money.
That sounds good. I understand the need for paint for, you know, for temporary situations, but it also does fade quite quickly. And then as far as curb ramps goes, quite a while ago, I think maybe when I was on the Traffic and Safety Commission, we asked to have curb ramps have... at intersections, always prefer two curb ramps rather than the single one that points diagonally out into the intersection. And I understand that for cost reasons, the diagonal one is less costly, and sometimes that's selected for cost reasons. And other times, there are obstructions, such as poles, such as sewer outflows at the intersection, that would make it very expensive to reconfigure for two. But I just... I wanted to just bring that up because I think that's an important part of policy that people have asked for because the diagonal ramp does point one right out into the intersection, whereas having two ramps that point directly across leads you directly into the crosswalk rather than having to, you know, the wheelchair user or the parent with the stroller having to go out towards the intersection and then curve away towards one way or the other. But that's a... I just want to make the council aware of that because that's a policy choice. We could choose to spend more money to make sure we always prefer the two. And, yeah, thank you for bringing up the... is it okay if I go right into comment? Well, no, I suppose we should have some public comments on this.
Well, we will have some public...
So, yeah, why don't I just leave it at that?
Can I ask a question? Just a quick one. How is this project, and that's striping especially south of El Cerrito Plaza on Talbot, going to sort of interact with all the changes we're making there?
Right, yes. The... we are in the process... we've had a couple of Traffic and Safety Commission meetings since you've discussed the traffic calming in the north part of Albany near El Cerrito Plaza. The plans that you have approved for Talbot are given in that traffic calming effort, and so the other work that we're doing in that neighborhood is consistent with this. And frankly, we kind of went back and forth today about whether to complete the entire segment of Talbot Avenue as part of this bid package or incorporate part of it into the El Cerrito Plaza traffic calming. On balance, I think it makes sense to complete the segment as far as we can in one project, if possible, so that we don't leave a couple of blocks without the appropriate treatment. So, it is... it will be consistent with what you'll see shortly on the El Cerrito Plaza calming.
Thank you. Let's open it up for the public.
Preston.
Good evening, council. I'm Preston Jordan, speaking for Strollers and Rollers. I want to thank staff for your rapid response, team action. I really appreciate getting this into the project. That means a lot. And as far as the curb ramps go, we would still like to see the detailed designs because in our experience, year after year, the detailed designs have not met the Caltrans standards. So, we don't have confidence necessarily that those will be met, which isn't to say that we expect them not to be met, but we do think public review is warranted. And that is, in fact, mandated by Albany's Complete Streets policy, which was adopted a couple of years ago. So, I'll read some portions from that. It says that "under planned consultation and consistency, maintenance affecting the transportation system will be consistent with local bicycle, pedestrian, transit, multimodal, and other relevant plans," which I think is pertinent to how we got to this point tonight without having had this material incorporated from the outset upfront, as required by the policy. "For stakeholder consultation," it says, "develop a public process to allow for stakeholder involvement on projects and plans, including but not limited to the Traffic and Safety Commission, to support implementation of this Complete Streets policy by the City of Albany." So, this project did not go through a public consultation. It simply appeared on your consent calendar, which is not according to the policy. Further, "Complete Streets routinely addressed by all departments. All relevant departments and agencies of the City of Albany will work towards making Complete Streets practices a routine part of everyday operations. Approach every relevant project, program, or practice, and opportunity to improve streets and the transportation network for all categories of users, and work in coordination with other departments and agencies." Well, that clearly didn't happen in this situation. So, again, I would ask you to look into having our Complete Streets policy implemented in the culture of how the city operates. Finally, "all project phases, Complete Streets infrastructure will be incorporated into repair of streets, except that specific infrastructure for a given category of users who may be excluded if an exception is approved via the process set forth in this policy." To my knowledge, there was no exception process pursued for this, and as you can see, in fact, it is going to be included now. So, again, I would just ask you to make sure that the city's culture changes so that it actually adopts the Complete Streets policy dictates into practice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have there other members of the public like to discuss this? So, let's bring it back.
I'm assuming that there are state and federal regulations on how curb cuts are designed, so the city is constrained by those regulations. So, just how much flexibility do we have?
The city Public Works Department always tries to follow Caltrans standard, whatever we can, from curb ramp design to using asphalt in this case. One of the major reasons is if we follow Caltrans standard historically, getting in a lawsuit or increasing liability is rare. So, this is the reason, you know, we always follow Caltrans standard.
I'd like to add also that staff really did approach this because it's mostly a slurry-seal project as a maintenance project. We were only replacing the existing due to funding constraints and wanting to use our Measure B funding before it expired. That being said, however, we also, parallel to this, have two processes in motion. One is, now that we have a full engineering staff, which we've only had for just a few months, and we've been bringing all of our contracted engineering in-house, we are getting up to speed with some of the projects we need to engineer. We are putting together a comprehensive pavement program, which we will be able to better vet with the community. Secondly, we are also putting together a very detailed, comprehensive, five-year CIP program, which we will be able to roll out both of these by the end of the calendar year for council's review. So, although this was not done exactly the way staff would have liked to have done it, we do have processes in motion that will prevent us from being behind the eight ball, especially, I believe, this is the second time with our Measure B funding, we've had to do this.
So, when's the deadline for the Measure B money? Is it...
I think we have to have it spent by June 30.
I wondered, looking this over, you know, trying to get up to this Caltrans standard, I'm sure that's written down somewhere and easily defined for any of the contractors we may be hiring to do this work. Isn't it possible to put something in the contracts that say if it isn't done to that standard, you don't get paid, or...
We adopt the standard, and we use the standard as part of our design. And this is part of our construction process, is our inspector will be out there to make sure the contractor constructs a ramp in accordance with the standard. Anything less than the standard, we have choices. We either tell the contractor that we do it, or tell the contractor to fix it, and either way, you know, if they don't do it right, we don't have to pay.
Okay. I see a hand in the audience who would like to comment on this coming up. Preston.
So, with due respect, in the past, it was not the contractor's fault, it was the engineering drawings' fault. So, the contractors built the ramps as proposed on the engineering drawings, and the engineering drawings were not in accordance with Caltrans standards. So, I, again, encourage you not to assume that engineering drawings will be drawn in accordance with Caltrans standard, and I can name 12 curb ramps right now that were built in the last five or six years that do not meet Caltrans standards.
Okay.
Who's doing the engineering drawings now on these curbs going forward?
For... well, for this project, we use Mark Thomas as our designer. What they do is they take a Caltrans standard to adopt and put it in the design. To move forward, it depends on the project, but no matter what, we will still adhere to the Caltrans standard.
So, in terms of the curb ramps, they're not regulations that we have to adhere to, they're standards that we adhere to. And, yeah, as far as I can remember, Albany has used Caltrans standards, but there are also our federal standards, which are similar to Caltrans, but not... they differ in the details sometimes. So... but we often have followed the Caltrans standards. So, we... in terms of rolling ATP stuff into this project, I think that's a great thing. As I've commented before, we're way behind in our rollout of paint and signage programs when you compare ourselves to Berkeley and El Cerrito. Berkeley rolled out something 10 years ago and is already now redoing their Bicycle Master Plan. El Cerrito, which has done a bunch of projects in the past few years, Richmond, this project's underway, so it's definitely more than time to get some stuff going in Albany. And if we can do them in conjunction with street rehabilitation, I think that's great. I think that one thing that's... that popped out at me, and as staff has already mentioned, that this is the second time since I've been on council that we've had to vote at the last minute on one of these types of projects. So, I'm very pleased to hear that, you know, that's simply an anomaly, and that will be different in the future, which I agree it should be. And, you know, one could have the impression... I think this is... this goes a long way towards overcoming the impression that the paint and signage pieces of the ATP are getting deliberately ignored because it's... you know, we've been told several different things at different times about these projects, so I'm pleased to see these get underway. So, I think... I think I will leave it there. I thank staff very much for having scrambled at the last minute to move the ATP forward.
Other comments? So, I'm... there were questions on 4-6, 4-7, we're going to vote on as presented in the package. 4-8 was also taken off.
Right. On 4-8, I would like to sort of separate this a little bit. What I'd like to do is to take the stroll piece out and just approve that part for this year, not for the three years. I think it's a lot of money, and I think it's going to keep going up, and I'd just like to have a conversation moving forward after this year as to perhaps other ways we could do this, and also to look at it in comparison with the city events, like the Art and Green Festival and the Film Fest, and how they're funded and how this really all comes together. And I'm not sure if you want to pull the stroll totally, or what would make this work best.
Well, other opinions on this?
That seems fine to me. So, you just... but just to clarify, you want to... everything is fine except only renewing the stroll for only one year instead of three?
Correct.
Okay.
Rochelle, do you have any thoughts? Michael?
No.
Nick, do you want to just make that a motion, and then we can discuss?
Well, we could. Or I would comment. I, you know, I'm okay with doing this also, but I would say that the stroll really puts Albany on the map, and even though this is a cost to the city, it's, I think, given the amount of commerce that it generates and the amount of people that it brings in town, it's one that I think we should be willing to take. However, I'm willing to do it this year and then discuss and see if there's alternatives.
Right. I'm not saying not do it. I just think we should talk about the best way to do it.
Yeah, and I think that all we're deciding right now is whether or not to defer to Councilmember McQuaid's suggestion that the consent item be changed and that our vote is not reflective of our perspective on the substance.
Right. So, could we have a motion to...
Sure. Do you have a public comment?
Oh, yeah, let us open up to public comments.
Alan and Brian Parsley.
My name is Alan Kane. I'm the Executive Director and Events Manager for the Solano Avenue Association. This is the first time, actually, I think, I've had the privilege of addressing this council officially, this new council, so I just want to say welcome to your new positions. I'm sure the community appreciates your volunteerism, and we look forward to your terms. We appreciate the green light on the stroll. You know, approving it for three years does so many different things. Number one, it allows us to better steer the organization and set goals. It allows us to negotiate multi-year contracts to save money and time in the future production of the event. It also conserves city and event producer resources, especially considering the Solano Avenue Stroll hosts guests from out of town in two cities, so it's a lot of work for both cities. $25,000, where does that get you these days? Will it get you the Solano Avenue Stroll? It's a fantastic event. I would argue to say that it's one of the few times where you can guarantee positive press through the year when Albany is mentioned or Solano Avenue is mentioned. Without detailing the merits of the Solano Stroll or highlighting items on the Solano Avenue Association resume, I would just say that the Solano Avenue Association contributes in many ways to the city, and we would appreciate a three-year commitment because it would mean that you recognize the value in our organization. And with that being said, I'd be willing to answer any questions that you have.
Does the city of Berkeley give you a three-year commitment?
They usually do a five-year commitment.
Anybody else that does multi-year commitments that's a significant...
Albany Ford Subaru has a contractual agreement. Some of our sponsors also usually sign an agreement for several years. It saves a lot of money and time doing this in bulk, doing an event like this in bulk. I could spend an entire day placing portable toilets. I mean, the work behind it's phenomenal, and the portable toilets, by the way, are $11,000. So, the event production costs are high, but look what you're getting for your money at the end of the day. It's a free family event. We could gate off Solano Avenue and start selling alcohol to subsidize money. For now, I don't think we need to do that. If we do need to look at ways to generate revenue in the future, I think that the character of the event will drastically change. Thank you.
Alan, before you go, I just want to say, I ride my commute bike up Solano briefly five days a week, and I often see you with your gloves on picking up garbage and litter on Solano Avenue, so I do appreciate that.
We are part of a team, and like I said, the Solano Avenue Association gives in many ways shapes and forms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Parsley, Albany resident. I actually... while I have some issues with the $25,000 with the stroll, it's more in the fact that in the past, not this council, but other councils, have criticized overtime within the police department for doing actual police work versus this for the stroll. So, I think we need to... I think we need to understand that how much money that $25,000 is. I spoke to that at that time, that while we... that council had concerns about how much overtime was being spent, we blindly give this amount of money over without any discussion. The other issue is the three-year commitment to not only the stroll, but to all the other events. Frankly, this council is not so busy that it cannot put this on the consent calendar every year and vote on it then. That way, it gives the public a chance to address this issue versus once every three years. Now, in three years, some of you may not be here, and that council member will then have to deal with a situation that you've put forward three years prior or two years prior. So, I think that addressing it every year, I understand the issue of a long-term commitment to the stroll. I think... I'm pretty sure Albany's in a long-term commitment with the stroll. I mean, I don't see that changing anytime soon, but I think certainly that, for transparency purposes, I think that it's okay to have this discussion, even if it's for five minutes every year, if somebody wants to. And putting it off to every three years, whether it be the stroll, or the Fourth of July, or the Little League Parade, or anything, is taking that... July, or the Little League Parade, or anything, is taking that, taking that away from the public, and I don't think that's fair. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, do we have further discussion, or would we like a?
Well, I just want to comment, since there have been a few more comments by the public, that I think that it's the once, the every-three-year thing, I understand the administrative savings and the ability for the organizations to plan better for the future, so I think that's what we get out of the every-three-years. That said, I'm still fine with deferring the, or having, making sure we defer discussion of the stroll till later. So, with that, and if everyone, unless anyone wants to make any more comments, I can make a motion.
I just have a question. The twenty-five thousand dollars, is that all taken up by our employees' overtime for the weekend?
It's a combination. We pay a five-thousand-dollar fee as an event sponsor, our partner with the Solano Stroll, and then approximately twenty thousand dollars in in-house costs for overtime and cleanup and different things like that. So, no, we only actually mail a check for five thousand dollars as an event partner.
I'm wondering if any of our police officers would want to comment, is this a burden on the Albany Police Department? The overtime for the Solano Stroll, has that been a concern ever? Okay, Peggy, what's, can you want to explain a little more your concern? I'm a little, I'm not, I'm just neutral, that's all.
Okay. But I want to go back, Penelope, I know you looked at this today, but in the past, it's certainly been written that the overtime was whatever it was, and there was a five-thousand dollar. Is that not the way it's been in the past?
I did not get a breakdown of the cost that encompassed the twenty-five thousand dollars, so it could be twenty-five thousand dollars plus the five thousand. I was under the understanding the full cost of our participating was twenty-five thousand, which included the five-thousand-dollar partner fee.
And I don't think five thousand dollars is a deal breaker. I just, I was just kind of curious, because I wasn't understanding it that way. I just think it's a lot of money and that we should look at it, sort of, and I do think there's an issue with city events that have to be totally self-supporting and don't get any support, have to pay the staff cost, and then why is this different? And I think it's a discussion worth having.
Is it worth having every year? I think that's the question.
I don't think we've ever had it.
You know, the question I would ask is, if we were to put this off for another year or do it on a yearly, are we going to have that discussion of ways of maybe refinancing? I'm sure we could agendize it at some point. And perhaps that's one reason to go with your idea of saying yes for this year, and, you know, then having, stopping and having the discussion about that. But I do understand how events like this, you know, it works better if they can have a long-term horizon.
Well, maybe the solution is to do the three years and be thinking about it over the three years.
I think that makes a certain amount of sense, and perhaps, and perhaps we could all get together at some point and talk about how.
Want to discuss Solano Avenue?
Yeah, I think that might be a good solution.
I'm not sure I understand the proposed solution. Can you run that again?
Well, the proposed solution sounds as if we are going to pass what's before us and then add on something to do with having a.
I'm not sure you even have to add anything on, just over the next three years, we could consider, before this comes back to whatever, whoever, whatever the council is in three years, that we have a better understanding of what we want to do going forward from there.
So, we take it up again three years from now.
And it might help too, to have a report back on just a breakout of the cost, any cost of public works, you know, overtime and everything, so we can break that down for you, so that when three years is up, you have a little more actual information to go on.
Could this be in and around some kind of budgetary discussion or general budgetary discussion?
Absolutely.
So, I think we're just promising to pay attention in the future.
A hand raised.
So, I think we've gone through the discussion of all these items, or, oh, please come up and join the conversation.
I'm sorry, just a preparation, you know, you've got a million things to do tonight, but I just want to point out, we've been, although the costs of producing the event continue to escalate, we've asked for the same money and received the same amount for the last decade. So, it's not like we're coming to you every year asking for more, coming to the pot a little bit more. We're actually spending more producing the event, looking more from private sponsors, and then going on with our lives. And as far as the Film Fest and the Arts and Green Festival are concerned, we sponsored that. So, just wanted to point that out as well. Again, it's the gift that keeps giving.
I think, Alan, I think my point was that as staff costs go up, then that piece goes up.
Fair enough. So, to clarify, Peggy, you're asking, you're no longer asking for any changes to 4-8?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. So, then I think we could have a motion on the entire.
Sure. I can move the consent calendar with the addition of the stripe and signage bid alternatives to item 4-7.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Can we have a vote?
Councilmember Brooke McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mayor Moss?
Yes. And the consent calendar passes. So, next up are presentations, and we have four presentations going on this evening. I've asked each of the council, other council members to make a presentation as they come up. The first one will be proclamation and recognition of National Police Week and Peace Officers' Memorial Day. Michael, please.
For those of you who don't know him, this is our police chief, Mike McQuiston. We're glad he's here. So, here's our proclamation. City of Albany proclamation in recognition of National Police Week and Peace Officers' Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers' Memorial Day and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Albany Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our residents, and whereas it is important that all members of our community know and understand the duties, responsibilities, sacrifices, and hazards facing their law enforcement officers, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against, the deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas Albany police officers are committed to the highest professional standards in working in partnership with our community to meet the challenges of reducing crime, creating a safe environment, and improving our quality of life, and whereas the city of Albany is proud of our law enforcement officers and wishes to recognize their commitment to public, the public safety profession. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes the week of May 10 through 16, 2015, as Police Week and calls upon all community members and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our community may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. And be it further proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes Wednesday, May 15, 2015, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day and authorizes the lowering of all American flags flown over the city of Albany facilities to half-mast on this date. Furthermore, we call upon the community of Albany to observe this day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of the fallen. Signed, Peter Moss, Mayor.
Just two seconds. Mayor Moss, members of council, on behalf of the men and women of the Albany Police Department, thank you very much for recognizing National Police Week and Peace Officers' Memorial Day with this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, next up would be proclamation and recognition of May 2015 as Mental Health Month. Councilmember Pilch will be doing this.
I'll read this, and then I'll let you identify yourselves and say a few words. I'm very pleased that Mayor Moss has asked me to read this. This is dear to my heart because my wife works as a school psychologist and has a sister who's disabled, including mental health issues, and it's also an issue that's just dear to me in general. So, this is the City of Albany proclamation in recognition of May 2015 as Mental Health Month. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas, there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all people can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas, with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives, and whereas, each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes May 2015 as Mental Health Month in Albany, and be it further proclaimed that the Albany City Council calls upon its citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Albany to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to prevent, to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Signed, Peter Moss, Mayor.
Good evening. My name is Linda Ball. Thank you.
Do you have an affiliation or?
I'm part of the Berkeley Albany Advisors, Mental Health Advisors Committee, and we are slowly, well, we are now being recognized. Albany is.
I want to thank the mayor and the members of the council, as well as the city staff and the members of the public. My name is Judy Kerr. I'm a member of the Albany Berkeley Mental Health Commission, and I'm especially appreciative of this proclamation this evening, on behalf of the one in five citizens of the United States and Albany who have an experience with mental health in their own lives, and in the one in 25 who have severe mental health issues in our community as well as across the nation. I think perhaps the most striking statistic that we face as a community is the fact that the delay between initial presentation of symptoms and initial treatment is up to eight years for children who present with mental health issues. I would encourage all of the members of the council, as well as the community, to be aware of that delay, to erase the stigma of mental health, and to celebrate this proclamation. Thank you.
Next proclamation is proclamation and recognition of May 2015 as Older Americans Month.
How are you? City of Albany proclamation in recognition of May 2015 as Older Americans Month. Whereas, the city of Albany includes a thriving community of older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, and whereas, the city of Albany is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives in the communities of their choice for as long as possible, and whereas, since 1965, the Older Americans Act has provided services that help older adults remain healthy and independent by complementing existing medical and healthcare systems, helping prevent hospital readmissions, and supporting some of life's most basic functions, and whereas, these programs also support family caregivers, address issues of exploitation, neglect, and abuse of older adults, and adapt services to the needs of Native American elders, and whereas, we recognize the value of community engagement and service in helping older adults remain healthy and active while giving back to others, and whereas, our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activity, wellness, and social inclusion, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, and ensuring community members of all ages benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes May 2015 to be Older Americans Month and calls upon every resident to take time this month to celebrate older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community. Peter Moss, Mayor.
I want to thank the mayor and city council, on behalf of the Albany seniors, we're the Friends of Albany seniors, and I'm the first vice president, and our president is not here at the time because he's off somewhere, so in his place, I'm taking it. I'm accepting this. And I say thank you from the Friends of Albany and the Albany Senior Center for the proclamation.
Okay. Thank you.
This is our, this is our treasurer, our secretary, yeah, treasurer, come on. This is our treasurer, Judy Cohen, and the secretary is Julia Lee. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, last but not least, proclamation and recognition of the 19th Annual East Bay Affordable Housing Week, May 8th to May 17th, 2015. Councilmember McQuaid will be making this presentation?
City of Albany proclamation in recognition of the 19th Annual East Bay Affordable Housing Week, May 8th to May 17th, 2015. Here to stay, building inclusive communities. Whereas, quality affordable housing is vital to building healthy, safe, vibrant, and diverse communities, and whereas, affordable homes are the solution to homelessness and provide support to seniors, families, youth, veterans, and people with disabilities, and whereas, rising housing costs have led longtime residents to be displaced, living in overcrowded and substandard homes or become homeless, threatening our region's diversity and economic prosperity, and whereas, creating new permanent affordable homes and preserving and improving existing rental housing helps our residents maintain community roots and encourages racial and economic diversity for generations, and whereas, development of affordable homes close to public transit and jobs can help reduce greenhouse gas emissions and provide low-income families better access to opportunities and amenities, and whereas, empowering residents living in affordable housing as advocates to help better shape housing, tenant protection, and development policies, and whereas, nonprofit organizations, local jurisdictions, community organizations, and many others continue to build inclusive communities by providing shelter, homes, and support for low-income people and those with special needs, and whereas, East Bay Housing Organizations has organized Affordable Housing Week for 19- whereas, East Bay Housing Organizations has organized Affordable Housing Week for 19 years and will feature 21 events acknowledging the need for and contributions of affordable housing, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes May 8th through 17th, 2015 as the 19th Annual Affordable Housing Week, and be it further proclaimed that the Albany City Council will continue to work to support affordable housing at the local, regional, and state level, and will encourage residents to participate in Affordable Housing Week activities. Peter Moss, Mayor.[637.79][637.79](APPLAUSE).
Mayor Moss and city council members, thank you for recognizing Affordable Housing Week and the work done by East Bay Housing Organizations, EPO. I am co-founder of Albany's Diverse Housing Working Group. The title of this year's Affordable Housing Week is "Here to Stay: Building Inclusive Communities," and I feel this is a particularly appropriate focus for our city right now in the face of dramatically rising rents and house prices. I have a friend with a good job who has rented a two-bedroom house in Albany for many years but is now facing an exclusionary rent increase of 50% from $2,200 to $3,200. And many of the individuals who contribute to the smooth running of our community, city staff, police officers, firemen, teachers, business owners, and those who perform necessary menial jobs, travel many miles to work because they can't afford to live here, and they contribute thus to the area's greenhouse gas emissions, and they increase their stress. And even people who want to buy here need to earn well above the area's median income to afford a home here, so it's clear that we need to approach the provision and protection of affordable housing in Albany with steely determination. So I commend you for passing a 2015 to 23 housing element that contains much good language in support of affordable housing in Albany, but the time has come for the city to take action on that language by supporting affordable housing over market-rate housing and changing the status quo. When properties come up for development, particularly properties the city has pegged as potential sites for affordable housing, such as Sizzler, we would be delighted if you refused planning permission unless the housing proposed is in a range that's affordable to people with very low to median income. Also, the state leaders in Sacramento are introducing some legislation to help fund affordable housing, namely AB 35 and AB 1335. Leadership at the local level is equally important, and we encourage you to pass resolutions in support of these bills in addition to your local leadership on these critical issues. Therefore, I invite you to join us all for the Affordable Housing Week events, and I have here calendars for you all, and invitations to the kickoff on Friday, the 8th. And out there is a list of the events that we will be attending, and I draw your attention to the bicycle tour on Saturday, May 16th of Affordable Housing in Oakland. So on behalf of EPO and Diverse Housing Working Group, I thank you very much for this proclamation, and we look forward to seeing you at Affordable Housing Week.[822.51][822.51](APPLAUSE).
Yes, affordable housing truly a challenge of our times. Okay, that ends the proclamation part of tonight's meeting, and we're on to new business. And top of that is city council benefits.
Good of the city. Good of the city.
Oh, good of the city. I'm sorry. I scrolled up too quickly here. So good of the city. Are there members of the audience who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Parsley, Albany resident. Just very quickly, this past week we had, I think, probably a very successful coffee with the cops again at Royal Ground. I think this is a great program. I think getting the community to engage with our local police officers is a wonderful, wonderful way to not only have our police officers learn about our community, but about our community and learn about the officers they see on the street. The one critique now that I would have is that I think that having coffee with the cops during the week sometimes precludes many, actually probably most residents in Albany who have to work two jobs or both families work, and having it always at Royal Ground seems like we're, the city is endorsing one business over many other businesses that are in the city. I know that Royal Ground has a very large area for seating, but there are other businesses that also could use that type of event near them. There's at least two or three other coffee shops on Solano that could probably use that business, and I think that encouraging the police department to have one event during the weekend sometimes to where members of the community that work during the day can reach out and talk to those officers would also be a good thing. But I think it's a fabulous program, and I hope it continues to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Alan Kane, Solano Avenue Association again. So speaking of the 10 years that we've been, or that I've been personally involved with the Solano Stroll as the director, I just wanted to point out there are several, the city operates much like a machine, and it's incredible how hard people work. There are two departments in particular that I just wanted to recognize very quickly. Well, the police department does outstanding job as well, but the maintenance department, you've got five people running a square-mile city with a waterfront, five parks, an incredible amount of work for them, and yet the city looks great and everything's maintained, and I think all things considered, they do an incredible job, so I just wanted to compliment them. And I'm hoping he's hearing these words as I speak them. Another staff person that you have, who apparently does not ever sleep, he works nights, weekends. His name is Jeremy Allen. I believe he does all the video and all the audio stuff for the city, does all of their events, does all of the miking and everything, and he does an incredible job, and I just wanted to compliment those two departments. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Others? Okay. Sorry, I almost cut you off there, so let's...
Oh, one more.
Oh, you would like to say something?
Yeah, just briefly, I want to say I was at Coffee with Cops, and I think it's a wonderful event, and I too look forward to perhaps some improvements that we could make on it, and perhaps also maybe a discussion of the state of police in the United States today might be something that we should consider to have in the future as well as this is on people's minds. That's all.
Okay. Other updates? No? Okay, so let's go on to new business, city council health benefits, which I believe we'll get a staff report.
Yes, the, is there a staff report? No. Healthcare benefits. For the last several years, this has been a contentious issue. Basically, I'm not exactly sure when, but the previous city council voted for itself healthcare benefits that were richer than the staff got, what the staff basically gets. Kaiser-level health benefits, but pays more if they want more. The city council voted for itself, well, two things. One, benefits better than the Kaiser level, and in lieu benefits, which means if you had healthcare benefits through some other employee organization like myself with the University of California, you could still get, you know, the money for the healthcare benefits that the city is not paying for you. This became an issue during the campaign, a little over two years ago now, and we promised that night at the Episcopal Church when we had our debate that we would address this, and we did. We had Paul Rankin, then our acting financial director, and Aaron Walker, our HR director, pulled together a report for us. That was, I thought, excellent and was a little embarrassing because it showed that our in-lie benefits were way out of line with what other small cities did, and also that the healthcare benefits above the level of the city were also unusual. So what we did at the time on our first pass on this was to get rid of the in-lie benefits. And then, so I brought this back now because there's been a considerable amount of turnover on the city council since that last vote, and I would like to address the final piece of this, and that is I am hoping that we can get a vote tonight to reduce the city council's healthcare benefits to the same level of the staff, which is Kaiser, and if you want better, then you pay the difference. And I think that's the discussion I'd like to have.
Okay. Thank you. Want to chime in on any of this for you?
We're just here to answer questions.
Answer questions. Okay.
There isn't a conflict of interest issue for this item, correct? Can we hear that analysis?
No, you can't, because normally the city councilors would not be able to vote on things in which they have a direct financial interest, but here you're the only decision-making body that can address this issue, so by necessity you have to be able to do it. So that's my analysis. It's part practical and part legal.
But I was concerned that it looked from the memo as if there's one member of the council who will be affected. I don't know if it's me, I don't know if it's someone else. Does the, if one individual is affected more than the rest of the council, are they required to accuse themselves? Do we need to identify?
They would only in the situation where they're getting a different benefit. If the same benefit is made available to all council members, but for personal reasons they're able or not able to use it, that wouldn't by itself be a ground for accusation. It'd only be if for some unusual reason the council tried to create a benefit for one council member, but not for others, but that's not what's being discussed.
Okay.
Okay. So let's open it up to the public. No comments?
Hi, my name is Margie Marks. I'm an Albany resident, and I was surprised to see this issue on the agenda again. City council members are not the same as employees of the city. You have to meet a higher standard to be in your position and to serve the citizens of the City of Albany. You're under a different type of scrutiny than employees are, a much higher standard of scrutiny. I believe it's correct that the city council members receive medical benefits. Your position, although paid a stipend, is basically a volunteer position. I may be wrong, but I doubt that any of you ran for the position just to get your healthcare benefits. I know that most of you put in more time and energy than just attending the city council meetings. I believe it's correct that city council members receive medical benefits. I think anyone who is in a position to choose healthcare benefits needs to have a choice. Kaiser is not an option for everyone, and everyone brings their own individual needs to this issue. The added cost may be prohibitive for some individuals if they want to run for city council and get the healthcare benefits which they should get. This citizen does not believe you need to be treated the same as employees. You are not employees. Given the pressure and time requirements of your position, I think it's proper that we citizens give you a choice of health plans and that we pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Parsley, Albany resident. This is obviously, as you know, a topic near and dear to my heart. I would agree that you deserve healthcare. I just don't believe you deserve healthcare better than that of employees of the City of Albany, of which you are, because you accept a paycheck from the City of Albany in the amount of $300 per month. So you are, in fact, employees of the City of Albany. Furthermore, you are employees of the City of Albany because we put you there, not because you were applied for a job, and you are held to a different standard. I would agree with that. I think you're held to a higher standard, and that standard is that you should not accept healthcare that an employee cannot, that a part-time employee cannot have, because there, maybe that's the only job they can get. So having the council healthcare be higher than that of its employees is almost a slap on the face to the people that you serve, not only the residents, but your employees. Second, when it comes to terms of what Councilmember Barnes says about the staff report, which was fabulous the last time we had it, I would like to note that Albany, out of, I believe it was 50 cities that were surveyed, large and small, Albany was the only city, the only city, that had council healthcare better than that of its employees. I don't think that's what you want to hang your hat on. I think the idea that if somebody's going to decide that they want to run for city council, but, gosh, that healthcare is really important, if that's the tipping point for somebody to run for city council, then they absolutely should not run for city council, because that is not what your job is about. So I think what you need to do is take a good, hard look at this before another 10 years passes, and we're creeping up on 10 years on this thing. And let's just get it right. Just pay the difference like every other employee does, or accept Kaiser, and just be done with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members? Okay, let's bring it back to council and have a discussion.
Let me just start, you know, this issue first arose for me when I was on the school board in 2002, and I was a UC employee then, and someone told me, you know, you can have healthcare benefits to the school district. And I was, well, that's nice, thanks, but no thanks, I really don't, you know, I'd rather have a very big organization absorb the cost rather than a small one. But it seemed reasonable. The logic then was that we have this plan, we already organized the plan, we have several hundred people in this plan, if you just kind of want to jump in and be a part of the plan, then you, you know, have that, you know, you have that right, you have that ability. And I thought that was a nice perk for the job, although I never took it. But I can see, frankly, and I usually agree with Mr. Parsley on many things, for those who are self-employed, at least until the ACA Act, that was a big issue. I mean, if you have a small business and you're struggling and working hard and you want to participate in your local government, the idea that you could get healthcare covered might allow you to free up enough time from running your business that you could actually participate. So I have no problem in principle with the idea. But the same goes for the city. I feel like the city has a healthcare plan. If city council members, you know, want to jump in and take advantage of that, I think that's fine and reasonable, but carving out, you know, special privileges for ourselves as city council members, I just find it distasteful. I don't think it's a huge cost issue for the city, at least as currently structured. If we all wanted, you know, a Cadillac Planet, it would become a big cost for the city, but I don't think that's going to happen. To me, this is a matter of respect, I think, for the staff and for the residents we serve to say that, you know, we are sort of part of the plan.
Okay.
I'll agree with that. I want to thank you for bringing this forward. Yeah, I've stood on that side of the dais talking about how I found it very, very disrespectful for this, for the council who can choose their own health benefits to give themselves a different rate than they allow the employees. I think that one of the things that makes city government work is a partnership between staff and council, and we have different jobs, we do them in different ways, but I think it makes sense to have this one health plan and with different, you know, different people, you know, there's Kaiser and there's Anthem and all that, but everybody has the same opportunity to choose what they want, and the council doesn't get something that's better, that they, that the city has to pay more for them. I think it should all be the same. In other words, what staff gets, capping it at the Kaiser rate, is what we should have, what we should give ourselves, and if you want something different, that's fine, but then you should be paying. But then you should be paying the difference. So I, I think, you know, and, and we've talked about this for years. I think it's, it's really time to, to finish this.
Okay. Very good. Rochelle, you have thought?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little stunned by the, the level of emotion and the kind of language that is being used around this, about it being a slap in the face and disrespectful and all these things. And I don't understand, I, I wasn't here, I wasn't part of these battles over the in-lu and whatever went on in the past. But all I would say is, I've been in nonprofit management for many, many years, where virtually all the employees are, to some extent, kind of like volunteers. They're all, almost all people who accept lower pay than they would earn in other types of jobs, because they're doing what they care about most, because they want to work for a cause they believe in. And in that setting, we do have very different benefits for different categories of employee. It isn't an unusual thing at all. And when you have a situation like this, where you have, you know, where we, in our last electoral round, we only had one person as a candidate for each of the seats that was available. I'm not sure that, that reducing the benefits is really a great management strategy. I don't think it's going to make a difference. I don't, as I think both Brian and Margie said, nobody does this in order to get health insurance. But it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, and I don't understand the level of, of anger that attaches to this issue. But I'm willing to hear more. Nick?
Thank you. So I'd like to ask a question of staff. Well, first of all, so two questions. First question is, does staff know exactly why, or the circumstances around which the city council originally voted themselves healthcare? And, and was it due to the fact that the compensation for being a city council member one time was very low, $5 a meeting, I believe?
That was well before my time.
Okay.
Have had health insurance provided to them since the 90s or prior to that even, perhaps.
Okay.
And at that time, all the way until relatively recently, they were paid $5 per council meeting as the stipend.
Right.
Also, at one point, management group of the city did have full coverage for any HMO plan. But as the years went on and the prices went up, probably seven or eight years ago, the management group did cap their coverage to the Kaiser level. At that time, council did not choose to cap their level to the Kaiser level.
I, I see, I see. And that, there, there was the bifurcation. Okay. Okay, great. And so then, and I understand the, the capping also, there's some relationship to union negotiations with the capping? Is that correct, or no?
Well, the represented groups, which are the police union, the fire union, the SEIU miscellaneous, employees union, all negotiate for their health benefits. And through the years, in years past, there used to be a cap of a dollar amount. This was in the early 2000s. As health insurance continued to climb quickly and unpredictably, at one point, they got away from capping it at a certain dollar amount and instead tied it to the Kaiser cap, because that was the lower price of the HMOs at that time. Since that time, there have been some more HMOs introduced. Last year, they introduced three new HMOs. Most of them still more expensive than Kaiser, but one of them that is less than Kaiser, that's on one of the examples on your staff report. But yes, the, the unions do negotiate for the cap each time. It hasn't changed in the past few contracts for each group. It's been pretty stable for this past seven or eight years, right at that Kaiser level.
So, so then is it that both the union-represented employees and non-union-represented employees have that same plan cap, that same Kaiser compensation cap?
Yes, both the union-represented employees and the management group. All of the benefited employees do have the same cap at the Kaiser level, yes.
Okay. Great. So I, yeah, as, I think as council member Barnes said, this isn't a question of cost, because I actually asked the question of, currently, the monthly cost per, average cost per council member for healthcare is $907, and for employees is actually 15, $1,527. So we're, we're not, because, because we're not all taking advantage of the healthcare, I imagine, is one reason for that. I do believe we are, although maybe technically employees of the city, I do believe we are in a different category. We choose to make ourselves lightning rods, and we are the policymakers, and, you know, we, we, we do have a different job to do in, in, in a number of respects than the staff. I think that the, I imagine that it was the, at first, I previously had imagined that the city council had gotten, negotiated different healthcare benefits because of the, the very small amount of compensation we used to get, the $5 for a meeting. I think that the compensation that we do receive now is a good thing. I think it's actually a social justice thing. I think compensating the elected officials for their time allows more people to be able to step up and serve as elected officials. And so that's inclusive, in my opinion. And I don't really know exactly how I stand on this. One thing I am very sure of is that I don't think it would be fair to the current, to current city council members to make a change during their current terms. If we made any change, I think it would have to take effect at the end of, you know, not affect the decisions that sitting council members have already made to their current healthcare, city healthcare. So that might be complicated to, if we made a change, it might be complicated to word that, but I'm sure we could figure that out. So I, I don't, I don't, I'm of two minds about this. I, I do understand it not being fair, and it is persuasive that we're, we might be one of the only cities doing this. On the other hand, I don't think it's, I don't, I don't feel, I guess, perhaps similar to council member Nation, I don't feel like this is a, of, my words are failing me. I, I don't, I don't put a lot of weight on this either, like we're making a huge, we're, we're deciding to make ourselves hugely differently compensated than the employees, perhaps. I'll, I'll leave it there for now.
Okay. Well.
Mayor, just one clarification.
Sure.
At some point in the past, I think it's state statute, that we went from being paid $5 a meeting to $300 a month. And I think that's capped by the state. And I believe that happened before this whole issue arose. In other words, the council, when they voted to maintain, maintain for themselves higher benefits, were already making $300 a month.
It was a ballot measure, I believe, the $300 a month.
It is, it was a ballot measure.
Yeah, I recall that the council has had access to any HMO of their choice fully paid for, for at least eight or nine years. And I believe the switch from $5 per meeting to $300 per month has occurred within the past five years. So the change of, is it five or six years?
2010, 2008 ballot measure?
We're all guessing. Why don't we, you know, maybe try to do something a little bit more?
I'm not guessing that it's a ballot measure, I'm sure of that, but.
Fact-based.
Well, what I can say that I know for a fact is that the council level of benefits for the health insurance has been at the level it has, was, that it is now, before the switch from $5 a meeting to the $300 a meeting.
And why is it coming up now? What is the, what is the impetus for this? Or is that a question for Michael?
Well, the impetus is that this is the first, now that we have a new city council seated, this is the first time we had room to put it on the agenda since we got rid of the in-lu benefits. And this is something that was an issue when we both, when, I know at least Pete and I ran for election, and, you know, at two years, I kind of reviewed the commitments I had made when I ran for election, and this one was still pending, and so I got it on the agenda.
And is it to, one of the issues that Nick raised, is the idea to have it take effect immediately, or at, at the end of?
Oh, I'd be happy to, if you wanted to grandfather this for a few years, and that's what I needed for three votes, I'd be happy to go for that. And, but I'd be happy to make it immediate as well. I think it's the will of the council.
I, I, I think we'd have the ability to make this, any changes like this, immediately if we so desired, yes.
As an example, the in-lu payments didn't take effect until December, even though it was voted on earlier in the year.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm, I'm going to weigh in here on this, because I was here the last time this came before council, Michael and myself were on council at that point. You know, during the campaign, this came up when I ran in 2012. And I was, it wasn't one of the issues that, that I had thought much about, but I had, I had agreed that, you know, in the, in the, as a matter of fairness, I would make the, make up the difference between the Kaiser cost and the more expensive health insurance. Kaiser is probably a great system. It just wouldn't work for our family if we were going to get health insurance. We already had particular endocrinologists and stuff for my daughter's diabetes, and I didn't really want to switch horses on that. And I think there'd be other people that might, if they were running for office and that was a consideration, I think they would, probably Kaiser wouldn't work for them either. I think I've become less neutral on this after the last election, where we had, as Rochelle pointed out, three people running for the three places we had. And it has occurred to me now that it's hard to get people to step up. And I'm not sure making this kind of change will make that any easier. Now, sure, most, probably most people in Albany have health insurance of one form or another, either through their work. But there are people that may not, or can't afford it, or, you know, this would be yet another inducement to get them on the ballot. And I think Albany's well-served. I know when we canceled the election in 2014 and accepted three very, very good council members, there was a lot of outcry about why did we cancel it? We just didn't have enough people running. And I think it's, you know, that's, to my mind, is more of a problem now than whether we're offering this extra benefit to council members. You know, this has often been put out as a, I, I know your argument in 2013 was that this is a very much a part-time job, so we didn't exactly, we were getting well compensated for that. What I've found since I've been on is that, on some level, yes, this is a part-time job, particularly if you only pay attention to council meetings. But there's all this other stuff that's going on constantly, and I'm constantly being kind of drawn into it, and, and particularly because now I'm the mayor at the moment. But I think I would be doing this also as a council member. I think Peggy goes to a lot of extracurricular things also as a, as a council member. So it, it's only a part-time job if you make it a part-time job. It's, I think it's really, if you're doing it right, you get to go out and attend, you know, Chamber of Commerce things, or Solano Avenue Association meetings, or diverse housing group meetings, or any number of other things that are going on. So there is some work involved. And getting people these days committed to that extra work, I think, is a challenge, because people do have a couple of jobs, or they're, you know, they're just have busy lives. So if, if we're going to take out one of the inducements to get people to run, or that might make them interested, I, I think that would be a mistake. Finally, I don't know, Rochelle's commenting on, on why this is an emotional issue. It, it, at this point, it almost seems like it's one of the last kind of wedge issues that comes up from time to time in Albany. I mean, we haven't had any Golden Gate Fields things come up, so we're not battling about that. But it's, it kind of harbors back to, I think, members of, you know, feelings between different people in this community over members of the council at different times when this has come up before. And I, I, I think that's unfortunate, but I think that's what kind of gives it its emotional In the end, I, I would, I would say we should keep it as it is. I'll probably continue doing what I'm doing in terms of reimbursement, but I don't think we should take it off the table for future council members, or council members who need better health insurance. And we might get more people in the next election. That's how I'm looking at it, anyway.
So you caused me to think of a couple of things to say. One is that we, since the in-lu piece was eliminated, that means, just to spell it out, you know, we, employees who don't choose to get healthcare through the city get compensated at the Kaiser rate, which is $700 and something dollars a month. If we choose not to get healthcare, we don't get that benefit. So already, it's, we, it's not like we get, it's not like it's that different necessarily. And obviously, it's not a cost issue, as I said. You, you do make me think about the unique role we have as Albany council members. In other cities, a council member position might be a full-time job. It's obviously not in, in Albany.
With staff.
Yes, with staff. God, I'd love to have staff. And so we, people who make this commitment do have to, often they have full-time jobs. The three of us do, I believe, and, or you have other compensation, like retirement compensation that allows you to, to, to serve, Social Security or pension or what have you. So we are, you know, we are, we are, we, we, we do have to make it work, we do put in extra hours, we put in evening hours, we go to evening events. In some ways, it's a 24/7 job. We're, you know, we're lightning rods 24/7 for whatever policies we make. So in that way, I do think, I, I am struck by the fact that having this dual policy, if you will, is, can serve to encourage more people to be able to make that commitment. And again, somewhat of a social justice thing, you know, allow more people to, to step up and, who might not have considered to be able to step, step up before because of financial issues. So I, I think I'm, I am leaning towards leaving things the way they are for now, especially since we've eliminated the in-lu benefits.
Do you? One of the things that has always struck me about this is, is, one of the real differences between us and staff is that we do set policy, and we're setting ourselves a very nice policy, and that really doesn't feel good to me. It's, it's, I don't like the idea that we're able to do that for ourselves. And, I don't know, it just doesn't feel right. And as far as, I mean, no one's saying people can't have health insurance, and no one's saying they can't have choices of health insurance. All we're saying is that there's a cap for every, all the employees in the city, and that, that we feel that we should have the same, the same thing. That, that's all we're saying. We're not saying we don't want you to have insurance, we're simply saying we're going to follow what everybody, we're going to give ourselves what we've given everybody else.
I'd like to say two things. One, my fellow council members.
One, my fellow council members are making a functionalist argument that for people who may run in the future, the difference between the Kaiser level and some other level of healthcare benefits that they would get above and beyond the Kaiser level is gonna be determinative for them in whether or not they run for council or not. I think, I just don't buy that argument. I think that's fallacious. I think people who are gonna come onto the council, who wanna serve and wanna be here at nine o'clock at night, are gonna be willing to do that whether or not they get Kaiser-level benefits or a level of benefits higher. You know, when we do contract negotiations for other groups, we do comparisons to other cities. You know, we look at police departments or fire departments along the San Pablo corridor and try to get a sense for where those benefits are at for those groups, and to what extent we can harmonize our benefits with other police departments or fire departments. And that's how we try to be fair to our employees. All I'm saying is that I think we should do the same thing for ourselves as council members, that we had a very good analysis from Aaron and Paul Rankin. And we know basically how other council members reimburse themselves, and other councils in the city, in the area. You know, we saw statistics pretty much for the whole county and maybe Contra Costa. And all I'm saying, I have a commitment to, since the taxpayers of this town are paying for this benefit, that we have benefits that are comparable to what other city councils do. And I don't like being in the position of basically giving myself a closet pay raise in a way that many residents won't be aware of and won't understand, not that I take it, because I don't take the benefit in the first place. So I find this distasteful, I'd like to get rid of it, and I am happy, if we wanna grandfather it, you know, I'm happy to do that. But, you know, all I can say is, you guys wanna run on this in two years, that's your business, but I wouldn't do it if I were you.
Okay.
Question for you, Councilmember Barnes, was part of your proposal that, and I don't think, I don't think my opinion is changing at this point, but it's part of your proposal to restore the in-lu benefits as well as, as well as bring the city council member back to Kaiser?
No, I think my, you know, my stance is that, you know, again, comparing ourselves to other city councils in the area, we had in-lu benefits that were well out of line, and we voted several months ago to get rid of those in-lu benefits. And no, I'm not proposing to bring those in-lu benefits back.
I'd like to clarify one thing. I think it's unlikely that a benefit like this, one way or the other, is gonna sway anybody's decision whether or not to serve, because we all know that's, it's a ridiculously, it's a volunteer job, it's not a low-compensated job. It's a volunteer job essentially, with a small stipend attached. I'm more concerned about, but it could influence a person, you know, you guys both are public employee, you know, veterans, and I think that you might look at things a little bit different than a person who's self-employed, or a person who works for a small nonprofit, or, you know, there's a lot of people in situations in which healthcare becomes a much greater concern for their overall financial picture. And I'd like to be sure that we don't end up with a city council that is all retired public employees, you know, that does include a diversity of folks with different kinds of backgrounds and different kind of economic lives, that that's kind of important. And I think that we should take a vote.
Sure.
Well, there's the discussion, it sounds to me like the possibility of just grandfathering this excess benefit level in the future is not something that anyone's interested in. Nick had proposed that maybe he would be interested that, in that, at the beginning of his conversation.
It is problematical if anybody is in an organization that has, that does not have open enrollment until December, then you're kind of suggesting something that a good manager wouldn't do with an employee.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think that if we're gonna make a change, we need to do it at the appropriate time, and I'm not sure when that is. Aaron, you'd be a better one to guide us on.
The new coverage year with new premiums is January 1st. So the open enrollment period is in October. To select what plan you would like, the premium is paid in November, the new coverage start, I'm sorry, the premium is paid in December, the new coverage starts in January. So, and, a time that could be the proper time, because you're already looking at a new batch of premiums and maybe different plans, would be for the new calendar year.
And by the way, the study that you mentioned, I don't, did not see it posted. Do you have it available with you now? Michael was referencing a study of...
This was something that was in our packet in February 2013, so...
It compared a number of other cities, and it was not included in this packet.
And I think if we were gonna get that, I would prob, you know, maybe nothing has changed, but I would wanna see if that needed to be updated.
And just made available to those of us who were not on the council in February of 2013.
Sure, I'd be happy to forward that to you from that meeting.
If that's an important part of the decision-making here, I think probably that should, it should have been circulated and probably should be circulated before we actually take action on this.
I would be more than, I don't know that, based on your comments, that this particular document is going to dissuade you from change, or make you change your mind. It's just really a survey of what other cities do. And it was true that the city of Albany is the only one that offered to play, to pay the full premium for basically any plan we offered. I don't know that in this short amount of time, less than, or maybe I guess a little bit over a year, that if we went back and resurveyed all of those cities, that would be a really efficient use of staff time, and I doubt it would change much.
No, I don't think that I would support doing a new survey, but I think that circulating the document so that it's available publicly and it's available to all the members of the council, if that's part of the impetus for putting this in front of us, then it should probably be made available.
Yeah, it was definitely made public at the time, because it was part of the packet when it was discussed the last time. But the impetus of this is simply because Vice Mayor Barnes would like to have had it discussed again with a new council. So I'm more than happy to forward that survey to all of you as soon as I get in in the morning.
Michael, do you...
Yeah, that's fine.
Want that circulated? Is there any reason that you didn't circulate it, or do you want it?
No, I think, why don't we, if the new members of the council would like to see it, just so we're all in the same place with the history of the issue, then that's fine. We can delay doing the vote until everyone gets a chance to review this document. I mean, I thought it was a very good study.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it would have been better if that was part of the argument, that it should have been out there, though I do remember that, that survey.
But on the other hand, you know, we burn through money as we sit here. You know, the staff time, we've got Craig sitting here, there's, you know, it gets to be kind of silly to just keep coming back, especially if it was decided a year ago. So maybe, Michael, I don't know, do you wanna make a motion?
Well, I'm gonna lose if I make a motion tonight, so there's no point. If I thought I was gonna lose, I wouldn't have brought it to the council.
Okay.
So I'm happy to bring this back after everyone has had a chance to look at the report.
Okay, so I guess there's no motion, and we'll go on to 9 point dash 2, letter of support for SB 277, Public Health Bill on immunizations and admission into public schools.
Hey, this was me also. I'm passing out a document that I received this morning from Senator Allen, who is one of the co-sponsors of SB 277. This is a list of organizations that have signed on to SB 277. SB 277 is a bill currently making its way through the state senate that removes the personal and religious exemptions for vaccination, for students to enroll in public and private Basically, the, I'm hoping we can get a joint resolution with the Albany Unified School District, the school district has already approved of this. So if we vote in favor tonight, then we will send a joint letter to the folks listed in the staff report, and I would also encourage you to send it as well to Senators Pan and Allen, so they can add us to the list. You'll notice the city of Berkeley, for example, is on this list, as are most of the counties and most of the healthcare providers, healthcare organizations in the state. Basically, SB 277 has made its way through the senate, three committees so far, health, education, and judiciary. I, you know, I didn't catch the first one, I don't believe there are any amendments coming out of health. Out of education, it was agreed that if parents do not want to vaccinate their children, then they have the option of multi-family homeschooling and participating in publicly-funded independent study programs. Coming out of judiciary, there was clarifications as to how children would be grandfathered, children who are currently not vaccinated will be able to main, stay in the system, but the current checkpoints, which are kindergarten and seventh grade, will still be enforced. So if you are a fourth grader, you can stay in the system until seventh grade, and then at that point, you would need to be fully vaccinated. And if you're an eighth grader now, you can stay in the K-12 system until you graduate. So the grandfathering was clarified. Also coming out of judiciary, the number of vaccines was limited to the current number of vaccines that are required. SB 277 maintains the medical exemption, all 50 states have medical exemptions, a minority of states, I believe only 20, have personal exemptions after the current measles outbreak that, I think there was concern about maintaining the personal exemption, so this bill will eliminate the personal exemption, which will make California the same in that regard as 30 states and the District of Columbia. And this bill, as it stands now, also eliminates any religious exemption. There are now currently only two states that do not allow religious exemptions, and those are oddly enough, Mississippi and West Virginia, who have extremely high vaccination rates. Whether or not the religious exemption survives, the remaining senate committees floor votes, and then, you know, the procedure in the assembly, I'm not sure. But basically, what SB 277 does is, given the outbreak of whooping cough over the last several years, which killed 10 infants in California, and then given, given the recent measles outbreak, and given the relatively low rates of vaccination, the public health statistics, and what we know about the growth in personal exemptions, this basically makes California conform more to the standards of the majority of the other states. And so what I'm asking for is a vote to endorse SB 277, so that we can send a joint letter with the school board to the various officials in Sacramento.
And the school board has passed this?
Any discussion, would anyone in the audience like to talk about this?
My name is Marjorie Marks, a Albany resident. I had the honor of working with registered nurses at Children's Hospital Oakland, and have heard them talk in recent years of having children come in and be hospitalized and die for these diseases that there are vaccines for, because parents are not vaccinating their children. And so I think that I'm really applauding the council taking a stand on this, taking a position on this issue, it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I support this. I brought a, kind of came forward about vaccination, thinking that there was something that we could do as a council, the way that Berkeley has done with its public health department, to actually encourage people to do this voluntarily. But I do support this measure.
I support this.
Strongly support.
Yeah, I also, I mean, this is, it seems to me a no-brainer on a lot of levels. I mean, I understand, as there is a lot of fear out there about things, people don't understand sometimes why they may not want their kid to get a vaccination, but I really, you know, when you're in public service, you're in the good of the public, and the good of the public, I think, really, this is an important thing to do, so.
So I'd like to move that the city of, the council offers a letter of support, along with the Albany School Board, on SB 277.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Neeson?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mayor Moth?
Yes.
I was prepared to show you videos of children with whooping cough, but I don't think it'll be necessary now.
Thank you for not sharing. Okay, so...
Thanks for bringing this to us.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's pretty much it, except for business, other business reports, future meetings.
Well, I went to Coffee with Cops, as I mentioned, and I also attended the, I'm gonna forget what it exactly was, the A-Bag Annual Meeting Symposium thingy.
A-Bag.
Yeah, A-Bag, which was very interesting. There were two things of note, one is a presentation on water issues, where we'll get our water in the future, recycling of water, this professor from Berkeley was saying is probably gonna become more common with, that we'll recycle not only gray water, but black water, and those are sorts of the measures to be looking for in the future. The other thing was a bunch of awards to cities, and the affordable housing representative left, but awards to a number of cities who have done transit-oriented developments, including affordable housing, and I can't remember what they are right now, but I think San Leandro was one of them.
San Leandro was definitely.
Yeah, San Leandro, and perhaps two others. It's very inspiring to hear about what they've been able to accomplish. Of course, there are cities with more means and bigger cities than we are, but it still was very good. And I'll finally note that they require a quorum to vote on their, the A-Bag Plan of Work for the Year, and they did not meet their quorum by a few. So you probably saw an email that you, you as the primary representative, if you're available, will be required to attend a teleconference to have that vote.
I did see that.
Yeah, so if you're able to make it, go ahead and...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, I didn't make the A-Bag thing, because there was also a County Transportation Commission meeting at the same time.
And there was also a League of California Cities event that evening.
Oh, yeah.
And just since I'm now talking, I also attended Coffee with the Cops, and also we had a great time yesterday at the Art and Green Festival.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
It was really, you know, as always, really well done and well attended, and if you could just turn off that wind machine every year, that would be...
It was cold out there.
Ooh, yeah.
Anyone else? I was at both a County Transportation Commission meeting and a Waste Management Board. One issue which I'd like to, perhaps this needs to almost be agendized, but one of the things that is coming up on the Transportation Commission is that the BB funds are now being doled out, and there's a whole list of things that BB said that they were gonna support. Oakland has now wanted to come in and get $39 million for Oakland Army Base, and, you know, they're kinda jumping the line, but what's bothering me... But what's bothering me about it is I'm also reading in newspaper accounts that the state of Utah is giving 53 million to the Oakland Army Base in order to build a, a port that allows coal to be shipped out. So now the, Oakland may be proposed to become the new coal export base on the West Coast.
Where, what meeting was this?
What meeting? Well, this is, the, the meeting that I went to was the County Transportation Commission, and there were discussion about BB funds, the, the bond measure, and one of the things that hadn't been on the original list was this Oakland Army Base, that Oakland is now pushing to get funded immediately, if not sooner. Anyway, it's a, it will be a very-
Army Base redevelopment.
Army Base redevelopment, but part of it is to allow for coal shipments, which I am somewhat disturbed by. That's, you know, be, I, I would predict will be in the news in, in coming months. The most interesting thing I've did was, in terms of meetings, that people here may be interested in, the East Bay Community Energy CCA had a kickoff meeting on Saturday at a restaurant next to the Hayward Golf Course, and not extraordinarily amounts learned, but I think it's good that Claire will be our official representative, Claire Griffin. As Supervisor Hagerty said, if you don't show up at these meetings, you know, you're either at the table, or you're on the menu. And I think this is where we're going to be really working to make sure that the CCA works for Albany, and as well as other small communities. Anyone has questions about that, I will, and we can end the meeting, and I'm happy to answer them afterwards. So, with that.
Just a reminder, we do have a two-by-two-by-two meeting-
On Monday.
Monday, the 11th.
Yeah. Okay, meeting adjourned.